Good morning, September 12, 2016. Regularly scheduled Commissioners' Court meetings called to order. Start with the invocation, followed by the pledge. Commissioner Prue, please.
Father in heaven, we're so thankful that we're able to meet here and discuss things that matter to these people in this county. Father, would you help us as county employees and county elected officials to do the very best we can for our citizens? Help us to do the things that create peace, to speak as us, not them, and them and we. Father, as I think about this nation and the extreme rhetoric and hatred that is going back and forth today, the only thing that could make for peace is if you would intervene and help us, and I ask you to do that for us. Especially pray for all those people who are putting their lives on the line, the first of our police and our sheriffs and all the firefighters and just everybody who works to try to keep this nation going. Worldwide, I was asked for you to help us to do the things that would bring peace and bring our soldiers home. It's no fun having families separated. Father, there's a war going on. I think it has to do with your word and the way that you want this world to be versus the way that Satan wants it to be. In this battle, help us in this county to be on the leading line. Help us all to be first responders to want to create peace and love everywhere we go. Now, help us with the business of this court this day and ask it in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Okay, good morning. Please turn off your cell phones and pagers, except for emergency personnel and law enforcement. And we're going to kind of skip around this morning because we, pardon me, we have the kickoff of the values this afternoon at the Horseshoe, and some folks need to go and assist getting that ready. And then we have some other items that have come up we'll explain later in the budget. So with that, let's go to item three. Discuss take action on court minutes from August 8th and 22nd.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Number four. Discuss take action on court fees from county and district clerk's offices. Allison, good morning.
Good morning. Per statute, I'm presenting the district clerk and the county clerk fees collected for August of this year.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you. Number five. Discuss and take action on Midland Emergency Communication District's budget for fiscal year 2017. Banda, come on up. There she is. Good morning.
Good morning. How are you guys this afternoon?
We're fine.
Good morning. This year, we have a special project where we are going to get our software at the P S app on their phone systems, ready for texting, and our goal is to have texting active in Midland by the end of December, but that will also depend on our carriers and how fast they can get their stuff done. But that's our major deal this year. Do you guys have any questions?
This is 911 texting?
Yes. Having said that, we will probably not go public with it until we work out the bugs and make sure it's, we'll go public with the hearing impaired because they're the ones that really need it. But until we're 100% sure it's going to work the way they say it's going to work and that it's going to not cause problems with the dispatchers, we probably won't go full-out public with it. Just because I know texting is the way people do it, and our goal will to be texting only if you can't call, because calling's still going to be the most important way to reach our dispatchers.
Well, thanks for constantly improving. We appreciate it.
I appreciate you guys being supportive.
So your operating expenses are down, but your special project, the capital investment, is up.
Exactly.
Any other questions?
Yeah, so when they do, if somebody needs to do a text, whether it's because they're in trouble and can't speak out loud or whether they're hearing impaired, will you be able to pick up then on the GPS and find out where they are from their cellphone?
Ideally, initially, they won't be able to. There's not technology available for that, but that's, they're working on the standards to make that available. So right now, no, it's not. And that's kind of why we really don't want to go public with it, because it's, you still have to know your location. I think they'll get an initial location, but it won't be 100% accurate. I mean, even cellphone calls aren't 100% accurate right now. So texting is going to be even, because if you're hiding, the idea of you're texting, you're going to be hiding somewhere, so your location's going to be even less visible because you still have to get, you know, under a bed or in a roof or whatever, how it's going to work. So generally, right now, it will not be. But when it's available, we'll definitely be ready to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Is that what this Airbus, is that what that is?
Yeah, Airbus, yes, is our software, our phone system software. And one of the reasons we haven't gone texting yet is because they didn't have their platform ready. And there were other intermediate platforms available, but they weren't great, and so we decided to wait until we could go with the software we already had that would do it, and that way, there's less players in the pot, if you will. There's one person to blame if it doesn't work versus multiple people.
Thank you.
Motion to approve the budget.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. And our resolution is right over there with Allison, and she'll give it to you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Number six. Discuss take action on the resolution with Senior Link. Jody, how are you?
Doing well, Mr. Judge, Commissioners. I think when it comes to bucket lists, I don't think anyone's put down on theirs that they look forward to going into a nursing home. And that's one of the things that Senior Link works toward, is making sure that our older adults get to stay in their own, the comfort and safety of their own homes for as long as possible. And many times, Meals on Wheels and our associated programs through our homebound services help them stay in that comfort and safety of their own homes for as long as possible, and that's made possible by the daily delivery of a hot nutritious meal and the safety check and friendly visit by one of our volunteers. And so through the Texans Feeding Texans program, through the Department of Agriculture, that's additional financial support to the other programs through the DADS and Area Agency on Aging to help fund the Meals on Wheels programs that we have in place. And again, we're coming before the Commissioners' Court asking for your support that makes that Texans Feeding Texans program possible.
And we have the resolution here authorizing the grant, and it's dated today, and it recognizes you as the proper official to receive it.
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Judge, I do have one question on timing.
Yes, sir.
Will this grant be funded out of this year's budget or next year's budget?
Veronica, this is dated for September, so it would come out of this year's budget. Is that correct? It says September through October.
Is that a matching portion or, depends on whether the grant requests that the matching portion is...
Actually, it says October, Judge.
Or at the progressively.
Yeah, says the grant, says we approve it on the 12th of this month, then in the body of it, it refers to it as October.
When it's used.
Through September. So the Commissioner approves its question.
Because it's paid in quarterly installments.
There you go, Jody. Thank you very much. Thanks for all you do out there.
We thank the Commissioners' Court and county very, very much for your support. Thank you.
Come any time.
Thank you.
We're going to deviate from the agenda right now because the treasure has to be somewhere. So let's go to item 22. Discuss take action on changes to Personnel Policy 5.09 concerning longevity pay. Mitzi. I'll do 22 and 31 so she can get to her...
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. In our personnel policy, longevity pay is Section 5.09. It has always read that each employee will receive their longevity increase the first full pay period following their anniversary. During discussions on our year-end this year and with the change to New World, New World will actually add longevity to every single employee on their anniversary date instead of waiting. And this way, we can exactly separate everything that ends 9/30 and everything that begins 10/1, save some journal entries and stuff at the end of the year. So since the computer will do that for us now, I'd like to change the policy to read that the longevity increase will happen on each annual anniversary.
Okay.
Motion to approve the change.
Okay.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. For the record, it was approved today. It's effective the 1st of October.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay. Let's go to 31. Knowledge Personnel Memorandum. Yes, ma'am.
There's nothing out of the ordinary today there, Judge.
Motion to acknowledge.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. And I think that's everything you ask.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. All right. Let's go back and get back in order. Number seven. Discuss take action on out-of-state travel. Pat Brashear to attend the Library Corporation Annual Conference, TP Arizona, October 16 through 19, 2016. It is a budgeted item, and John is not here.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Number eight. Discuss take action on out-of-state travel, excuse me, for Valerie Rodriguez to attend the Association of Booking and Outreach Services Conference in Covington, Kentucky, October 19 through 21st, 2016. This will be the first time, I think, she goes since we were not up and running last year.
I'm excited to find out whatever she learns there from that, so I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Number nine. Discuss take action on additional funds for witness expenses for the district attorney's office, Madam DA.
Yes, sir. You know, every year, we put in the amount in both the evidence attainment and witness expense line item that we are projecting. This has been a particularly busy year, and we have to come back and ask for more money in each of those line items. For witness expenses, we need an additional $10,000 to get us through the end of the year. And for evidence attainment, we need to ask for an additional $10,000 as well to cover the sexual assault nurse exams for August through the end of September.
Okay, we're going to vote on them independent of each other, so right now, we're talking number nine.
Yes.
And that is for witness expenses, $10,000. Veronica, contingency?
$67,000 currently.
Okay, so we could take it out of there. Okay. I'd make the motion that we take $10,000 from contingency for additional funds for witness expense. Okay.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Number 10. Discuss take action on additional funds for evidence attainment for the DA's office, and she's already informed us it's $10,000 there.
Yes.
Okay. I'd make the motion that we apply or take additional $10,000 from contingency for evidence attainment for the district attorney's office. Okay.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. 11. Discuss take action on hotel room rates above per diem for district attorney's office. Yes, ma'am.
All right, this is an unusual situation that I'm actually very proud of. We submitted the name to the Texas District and County Attorneys Association this year of one of our prosecutors to nominate them for the Lone Star Prosecutor of the Year Award, and he won.
Wow.
So when we made our hotel reservations, we had to make them as non-refundable as opposed to the convention rate, which was $99. These are two rooms at $149.99 each, so it's significantly higher, but we had no idea if he would win, and if he didn't win, we didn't want to get stuck with the hotel room. So that's why we had to make an exception. On September 20th, Ralph Petty will be named as the Lone Star Prosecutor of the Year for the state of Texas.
I hope you will get that out in the media.
We certainly will. He deserves it. It's a very, very unique recognition for him.
Heather will do the social media that the county has.
That'll be great. As a matter of fact, we're going to bring him back before the court, much kicking and screaming from him on, I believe it's September the 26th, to recognize his...
Is this per diem in Austin?
No, this is in Galveston.
Galveston.
Where they're having the convention.
Okay. All right, there's the explanation. Is there a discussion or motions?
And motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you, Teresa, and congratulations to Ralph.
I certainly will.
Item 12. Discuss and take action on other county judges signing the VCLG Grant 1772482 for the district attorney's office.
This is the Victims Coordinator and Liaison Grant that we receive from the Attorney General's Office every other year, and that is the acknowledgement and the acceptance of this grant.
Make a motion that we authorize the county judge to sign the VCLG Grant number 1772482 for the district attorney's office.
Okay.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. There's your grant.
Thank you, sir. Thank you all.
Thanks very much. Item 13. Discuss take action on authorized county judge signing the VCLG Grant 1772490 for the sheriff's office. Sheriff, good morning.
He's not here.
Well, Rory, tell the sheriff good morning. You're next up.
Okay, that's same as the district attorney's office, it's an annual renewal. It goes to our Assistant Coordinator for the Crisis Intervention Unit.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. And there you go. Thank you. Now, there are three copies of that in here. Are they all necessary, Rory?
No.
Okay. I'll take it back. There's five copies in here. I take it back. There's six copies.
Judge, they want it bad.
They want to make sure you sign that.
I am holding an extra six copies if you need it. Okay. All right. 14. Discuss take action on funding source to repair drain line under floor in central jury room. You might give a little history on this, please, sir.
About a month ago, during that big rain, the street, Michigan Street flooded, was over the curb, and water started coming up in a crack in the central jury room. We noticed a crack in the central jury room floor a couple of months ago. That's a different issue we're going to have to deal with, but water started coming up through that crack. And we've done a lot of research on it, and what has happened, what happened was, we have 17 roof drains on the roof of this building. They're basically split into two sides. They go to a collection port on the south side and the north side, and they come down through the mechanical room, and then they exit the building under the floor on an eight-inch line. On the north side, if you look in the street, you'll see a whole bunch of holes in the curb. There's seven of them on the north side, and there's a manifold underneath there that this eight-inch drain line comes into and then splits and dumps water into the street to get rid of it off the roof. Two things happened. The manifold that's out in the yard is partially blocked with debris from years and years and years of dirt being washed down. The other thing that happened was about a four-foot crack has appeared in the cast iron that runs underneath the floor. When we, excuse me, when we rebuilt the building, we put in all-new drains up in the ceiling and coming down inside the mechanical room, all-new cast iron because it was corroded. We did not, however, cut up the floor and replace the stuff under the floor. So what has happened is, is the crack allowed water to seep up through. It wasn't getting out into the street. It came through the crack in the jury room floor and flooded the jury room, basically. So we have two issues going on. We had trenches replacement specialists come out and run a camera from inside the mechanic room out to the street. They found the crack. They found some debris that needs to be cut out of the drain line under the floor. The good part is, we're not going to have to cut up the floor to replace the drain. They're going to be able to go out in the street, cut the line, go in our mechanical room and cut the line, and run a new line inside the other one. But it's not going to be cheap, but it is going to be cheaper than cutting up all the concrete and tearing up all the carpet and replacing all of that. So, and as usual, this all happened after I requested my money for the budget. There's always at least one hiccup of major proportion. So this can, if you wish, can wait till budget, but I need to, right now, I'm asking for $20,835 to do the drain repair. That's what it's going to cost that I didn't put in the budget. I don't know what it's going to cost to fix the crack in the jury room floor because we haven't cut that up yet. Our fear is, what happened was water from this crack in the drain started leaching into the fill that they put underneath this building. In my research, I've talked to several architects in town, and they found out that a lot of these buildings, they hauled in clay to put underneath the concrete, which is a good thing until it gets wet and it swells. There is no liner underneath the concrete in this building. It was built before that was mandatory to put a vapor barrier under the concrete. So what we're assuming has happened was the crack swelled the clay, which cracked the concrete, where we made a cut in the concrete to run conduit for the bench in the jury room. That's going to have to be repaired. I don't have a price on that yet because we're going to have, we don't know how extensive a cut we're going to have to make and what we're going to have to do underneath the slab once we get the cut made. We may have to add dirt. It may have caused a cavern in some places. We don't know yet. But the drain needs to be fixed first to let everything kind of settle out and then dry up before we go to the next stage. And this being the middle of September, if you want to add this to the budget, then we can do this in October, however you want to do it.
Okay.
That's kind of it in a nutshell. I do have pictures, if you want, of the drain on a thumb drive if you want to see them.
How big is the line? Is it six inches or eight?
They're estimating it's either a six or an eight. They can't tell exactly until they get in there, but it's either a six inch or an eight inch. We know it's an eight inch coming down, but we're not sure exactly what's under the floor, but we're assuming the same size.
So this quote that you're giving that says for a six inch, but it says here that if it's eight, it's going to go up?
It could go up, but, well, the quote says it's either a six or an eight. The price shouldn't be much different for an eight for the liner. It may go up a little bit, but not much.
Okay.
Jim, it may, this is something we can do when we have the money. This is not an emergency. Is that right?
It's not an emergency, but if we have another major rain like we had, we will have problems in the jury room again. It will come up through the floor again.
Okay, $20,008, $21,000 even numbers the auditor likes.
Right.
We've got $21,000 in capital account, I believe.
I'm not sure. We'd have to look at that. We do have, again, we had 67 in contingency or $43,000 miscellaneous, nondepartmental.
This will take approximately two weeks to do once they start, so it's not going to happen, I mean, it's not going to be an immediate fix anyway, so if you want to wait till the 1st of October, and, you know, we'll just, we'll just do our best.
I think because of all the rain that we've had, I'd be too concerned for us to wait. I think we need to go ahead and get it done.
Okay, the auditor gave us two accounts to choose it from.
I'll make a motion that we go ahead and do those repairs and just, you know, just make it where y'all can discuss which line item to take out.
Yeah. Just take it out of miscellaneous.
Okay, take it out of miscellaneous.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, and I'll come back to you once I get price on the repair to the floor and the carpet in the jury room.
Okay, and you might visit with Ross, because I know we had a sellout crowd in the jury.
Right, that's another thing we're going to have to do is figure out, this part won't bother the jury, but the repair to the floor, it'll be out of service probably several weeks.
Okay.
Yeah, once we get to cut the floor off.
Because we're still authorized to hold court at the Horseshoe, and you could take them in the building and see if you needed to.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. 15. Discuss take action on out-of-state travel for Rory McKinney to attend Texas Southwest Border Sheriff Coalition Conference, Ria dosa in New Mexico, September 19 through 21, 2016. Rory, is that a budgeted item? I don't recall.
Yes, sir. As a matter of fact, I've already got paid for it. Already got a check for it, and we realized that it was out of state, so we need to get approval.
A little early for the ski season, though.
Yeah, I don't do that anywhere.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
All right.
Second.
We have multiple seconds. Motion and seconds. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Item 16. Discuss take action on Midland Sheriff's Office civil fees. Mr. McKinney?
Yes, sir. These are payments collected for the month of August.
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. 17. Discuss take action on other county judge signing the savings maintenance grant for the sheriff's office.
Yes, sir. This is another annual grant that we receive for victim notification services. When offender is released, they will notify a family or anybody that goes online and wants to be notified.
Are there any changes on this?
No, sir. It's the same as from last year.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you, Rory. I think I'm down just to the one that Ed sent me. Let me sign that one. Okay. I just received a message, a sad message, but all of us need to know it, that Barbara Culver passed away. The arrangements are pending. Some of you may know she suffered a fall and then was waiting for some heart surgery, and she died last night. So, y'all, stay tuned. We'll try to get you the arrangement information and send it to everybody. Okay? There you go, Rory. Eighteen, discuss take action on purchase of vans for IT. Kristy?
Yes, sir. These are budgeted items, and we originally brought this to court on July 26th to purchase through Caldwell Country, but they will not be getting these vehicles for eight more months. So we decided to go through Sandpac Five Star Ford and use the state contract to purchase two vans at the amount of $29,347 each.
Motion to approve.
Second. Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Nineteen, discuss take action on county judge signing HOV Services Support and Maintenance Agreement for County Clerk scanners.
Yes, sir. These are the scanners and scanner agreements for both county clerk and district clerk for our fiscal year 2017.
Okay.
Make the motion that we have the judge sign the HOV Services Support and Maintenance Agreements for County Clerk scanners.
Okay.
Second.
Motion, multiple seconds. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign.
Do you also need a district clerk in that?
I would make the amended three district clerk as well.
Okay.
Second.
All right. So we have an amended motion and a second by the proper folks. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you. Item twenty, discuss take action on other county judge signing Vector Fleet Contract.
Yes, sir. Vector is increasing their contract by 2.1% for labor. The amount for fiscal year 2017 will be $569,688.18.
Motion to approve.
Second. Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. And there's any increase, is there any increase in vehicles for the coming year? Are we maxed out right now?
I think we are maxed out right now.
Okay, so it's still the same next year?
Yes.
All right, very good. Twenty-one, discuss take action on other county judge signing Johnson Control Maintenance Agreement for SO Detention Chillers and AC.
Yes, sir. This is for fiscal year 2017. The agreement is actually for three years. The first year will be $19,213. The second year will be the same, and the third year will be $19,789.39.
Make the motion that we authorize county judge to sign the Johnson Control Maintenance Agreement. Okay. Here's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next couple, we're waiting on Stacy and them. They should be at the airport headed over here. And number twenty-six, he has been delayed in route, so we'll put him back on for next court meeting. And then let's get to twenty-seven, discuss take action awarding paving contract on County Road 1230 and County Road 140. Robin?
Yes, we're finalizing the right-of-way acquisitions on County Road 1230 and County Road 140, and I think it's probably time to go ahead and do the, award the contracts. That's out, right?
Yes, I've got the bid tab.
Okay.
Can we see that? I don't think we have a copy of that.
No, we don't.
Oh. Thank you.
I want to go ahead and announce the bids. When you get it back, or?
How many bidders did we have?
Two bidders. We had Reese Albert and Jones Brothers bid on it. We had a bid opening, what, three weeks ago?
I believe that's correct.
And all the bidders were there. Reese Albert bid $3,605,127. Jones Brothers had $3,278,810.75. So there's about a $400,000 difference in it. I would make the motion that we grant this to Jones Brothers in the, for $3,278,810.75, and remind the court that this is reimbursable by the state 100%. So I would make that motion.
Okay.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. And that's the C.T.R.S., is that right?
That's correct. That's under the C.T.R.S.
Since that's reimbursable, Veronica won't having probably 75 cents.
As long as I get it back, we're good.
She gets it back.
Okay.
Won't have to round it all. That's it.
Okay, item twenty-eight, discuss take action on use of horseshoe for Impact's Value Kickoff Event. That's this afternoon at 3:30, and part of the Impact's team is right here. Good morning, Jenny.
Yes, so officially, for us to get the horseshoe for its use and for free of the fees, we had to get, have to get your approval.
Yeah, same as we do for the mountain patrol. We pay the duly fee, management fee, and we grant the use of it for free. Is there a discussion or motions?
Motion to approve the horseshoe for the Impact's Value Kickoff Event.
Okay.
Second.
Do you pay for it by duly funds, correct?
I'll make it for it.
Do you pay for it by the funding?
Like we pay for it.
Marketing funds.
Correct. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Twenty-nine, discuss take action on designated parking for Impact's Honoree of the Month. Jenny?
So we have the official Impact's of the Month parking signs right here, and after discussing with Felipe and Tim, we thought that where there is a designated Purple Heart Parking, Reserve Parking, that stands will be placed in, at all the locations next to where that is, where the Purple Heart Reserve Parking is. And then, depending on who the Honoree of the Month is, these signs will get placed on that pole where the employee works. So, and then the sign will go to wherever that employee works, to that location. So the signs won't be up permanently, like the Purple Heart signs are at all the facilities. They'll get moved around. So we have two of these made, and they will move to where the employee of the month works.
And what kind of festivities you going to have today?
A little bit of everything. We're going to announce the very first Impact's of the Month Honoree, and we're going to have some refreshments, and we'll have a photo booth, and we'll have T-shirts to give everybody. And we will have the person that nominated the Impact's of the Month Honoree to read their nomination form in front of everybody, and...
Did you receive any nominees?
We received over 70 nominations over a period of weeks.
Wow.
And they were very good.
Good.
They were very good. And Steve Soslin will be here. In fact, I think he's probably here now, just wandering and maybe looking at the honor wall, but he will be part of the event as well.
Okay, very good.
So we're looking forward to that.
All right.
And we have, I think we have 400 RSVPs to the event.
Okay, good deal.
Motion to approve the Designated Parking for Impact's Honoree of the Month program. Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Same sign. Motion passes. Number thirty, discuss take action on fleet accidents. Dwayne, good morning.
Not a good morning.
Uh-oh. Man.
Not as good as it could be. Got three to report this morning. First one will be 35049 is the unit number. It is juvenile probation. On the 29th of last month, they were en route to, oh, out in DFW to pick one up. They stopped in Merkel, backed up, hit a pole in the parking lot. Damage to the vehicle is going to be about $3,300. Back on the 24th, unit number 15470, deputy back, was backing his vehicle out of the LEB parking lot, struck another citizen's vehicle. The damage to the citizen's vehicle is going to be around $3,800. And then I just got reported one just a few minutes ago, that somewhere within the last three weeks, a juvenile probation vehicle, 35046, was struck in the rear end, very minor damage to it. It's a 2006 vehicle. We won't fix it for what damage there is. No cameras in the parking lot, so we won't know when or how. And that's it.
Any?
Motion to acknowledge.
Second. There's a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. We've done thirty-one. Let's talk about thirty-two. Discuss take action on budget line item transfers.
I just have a couple of line item transfers to bring to your attention, and that is on page three of six, line item transfer 8910, and it is moving money from non-departmental to the commissioners' court to move money in the right place for the internship program that we had this summer. So it's just coming out of the non-departmental, putting it in the combined commissioners' budget. The other line item transfer to bring to your attention is on page five of six, number 8945, and that is moving money from the IT capital outlay more than greater than 5,000 to the purchasing vehicles line, and it's for $6,694. Description indicates bins and drop-down kits for the new vans. So they're providing the funds for that.
Okay.
That's all I have for you this morning on that.
Any questions on the line item transfers?
Motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thirty-three, discuss take action on bills and wire transfer.
I do have a couple of wire transfers to bring to your attention this morning, and there is one for the, actually, two for the county clerk's office, one for the clerk account. $704 deposited in pulled cash in error, and the credit card account is for $3,273 deposited in general pulled cash account in error. Those are the wire transfers. As far as the bills are concerned, I do have some exceptions to the bills this morning due to, most of it is due to non-P.O. I have Fitzgo Company, $330, service call to, for sound to the horseshoe pavilion, and no P.O. I believe it says duly ordered it directly by Fitzgo and didn't request it from the facilities department, therefore there was not a P.O.
I believe that was just before, what's the date on it?
The date on that, service call on July 14th.
Okay.
I do have one for Off, just a second. I do have one for Westlake Hardware, and it is in the amount of $108. It's out of facilities also. It's wastebaskets and paper tiles and such. It indicates the attached invoice needs to be expensed. There was no requisition done because didn't realize janitorial supplies couldn't be bought out of the BPO for Westlake, which was for building maintenance. So there was no P.O. done there. I do have Petro Communications, $877.50 for the sheriff's department. Explanation provided, so please, we did not have a purchase order. This was one of those B. John McDaniel specials that we were not, never advised of, and it's in the amount of $877.50. That was the explanation provided.
Because this, well, as B. John, we were never advised of, maybe.
I have two invoices for tenant, sales and service company, and I, in the amount of $1,203.29 and $265.09, and those are from facilities. One of them indicates the attached invoice needs to be expensed. There was no requisition done by Rick Woody, contacted tenant directly. The other one indicates the same thing. Rick Woody contacted tenant directly to do some services out at the horseshoe. So there was no P.O. done on that. I do have a Xerox one for pre-trial bonding, and that has to do with the removal of the hard drive. They didn't know that it was going to be a $175 charge on it, and therefore no P.O. was obtained on that. I do have one for Office Wise, 318th District Court. It was having to do with ordering something off of Office Wise. It was actually a cart that's more fitting for the equipment and furnishings line, and so it was $109, 207.22 that was submitted there.
Okay.
I do have one for Karen Hood. She is asking for reimbursement for some items that she purchased for the Impact's Kickoff Program. Explanation provided, said these items were purchased without a purchase order because there was not an approved vendor to purchase the items needed for the Impact's Kickoff that will be held today. I also have the backup, the duly invoice that we had received previously for the opening function, the food, and yeah, it was just all food-related items. They were serving 350, and there's various fees for the 350 individuals, I guess, that we were expecting at the grand opening, and they did provide that information to me. And I think if you would just repeat for the record, the public purpose and how it benefits the county for me, I'd appreciate it, since we're going to go ahead and pay for this one this time.
Is that all you have?
That's all I have.
I got one that came in since you put that together, and this is for the McGinnis Law Firm, $6,846.80. They are representing us, software case, and it's itemized.
Okay.
I would submit that with the bills.
Okay.
And in keeping with your request, the public purpose on the food was, it was the opening event at the horseshoe, and we had members of the community, plus some other electeds and promoters who were in town to see how the thing functions. So that's the public purpose, how it benefits us. It did attract a couple more promoted contracts.
Okay.
Or concerts, excuse me. So, okay?
Yes, sir.
So you've heard the request. Is there discussion or? Not hearing any, is there a motion?
Motion to pay all the bills.
Okay. And wire transfers.
And wire transfer.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. We're still waiting on people. Let's drop down to thirty-nine, and that's take action on submitted applications, permit to use county right-of-way for utility line installation, driveway construction, mailbox construction, precinct one.
Judge, I have one to approve.
Okay, precinct two.
I have three.
Precinct?
Three. Got five.
Okay. Wow. Precinct four.
I have fifteen. I'm kidding, I have zero. I'll make a motion to approve that.
Second. Okay, and we have a motion and a second on all those. Everybody in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Okay, now, we are still waiting on two people to get here. We have thirty-four conduct a public hearing on the Millen County Budget for 2016, 2017. We can hear it today. We are not going to adopt the budget or the tax rate for the following reason. There was a grievance that came in. It was simply missed, but in checking the history, it did come in in a timely manner. It was in an email format, and it was missed. So to give the individual due process, we're going to draw some more names. We're having trouble getting people to show up. And Charlie, you and I talked about, we're going to try and do it this Thursday, if we can get them. If we can't, then it'll be the 22nd, but we're going to exhaust all the names today.
The Thursday?
It's next Thursday week.
The week of Thursday?
Yes, sir. Okay, and that will comply with all the state rules, and then that means it will be resolved before we get to an actual budget adoption. So the salaries will reflect whatever's awarded or not awarded. So we are going to discuss the updates and the changes to the budget, and before the auditor tells us about that, Alan, I believe you have some information that you were gathering from a request about having a officer full-time at your place.
Yes, sir. I had talked with the sheriff at a couple meetings ago, or a meeting ago, and he had brought to the court a request to add to courthouse security for a security officer for our building. At that time, our funding rules said strictly that we could hire off-duty deputies, but we could not hire or pay for actually hiring an officer. We, I did talk to Texas Department of Criminal Justice. They did say that we're, although we can't outright hire an officer, we can enter into an agreement with the county and can pay salary and benefits for an officer. So I wanted to bring that back up with the court. So I wanted to bring that back up with the court for consideration. I would really appreciate it. Right now, we've gone forward and we have the schedule. We have off-duty officers working at our building for security. I'm going to do that, irregardless of whether the court helps me out or not. But it's a lot more expensive to hire off-duty deputies than to pay salary and benefits. So in everybody trying to tighten their belts, us included, it would greatly help us out if there's something the court could do to get us security over there, and we would be able to reimburse the county for it.
Alan, two things. Not that we don't trust you, because we do. But the person that you communicated with, will they put that in writing?
I have an email. Would you, is that good enough?
Madam Auditor, will that work for you? By golly, way to go. Does the officer, this would be a new person, working exclusively with you, and in keeping with the budget, I would suggest that they work for you. They don't work anywhere else. And when the state quits funding it, then we'll have to discuss it again. And are there equipment or gear that that officer would need?
Well, we've got a computer in there. I mean, we can provide all office equipment. I don't know what type of, I would defer to law enforcement for what other type of gear might be needed that the county, you know, that would be provided that.
All right. And did they, they, or you, suggest what is the salary on this person? What grade and step?
They didn't suggest to me. I mean, I haven't, the state didn't suggest. And I have not talked to anybody in the county about what grade and step would be.
Okay, so based on that, it would be an entry step?
Security officer.
Yeah. Okay.
Judge, based on that, and then how about a car and all that stuff? Do they need a car?
I don't know if they need a car. It would just be building, and, I mean, they really wouldn't have to go anywhere to do anything. It would be building security only, as far as I can anticipate.
Okay. Would you want them exclusive to adult probation, or?
Just adding a person to the rotation or such? That would be a courthouse security question, but just even adding a person to the rotation?
Right, yes, yes, sir.
And it's at a grade seventeen.
The only question is, the court's on record of saying no new employees unless somebody else is paying for it. So that means that's a dedicated employee. We're taking your money to pay that position. So when that money stops, that position goes away.
I agree.
Is how it's set up.
I think we need to continue that way.
Okay.
Okay.
So.
Just wanted to make clarification.
You said seventeen-one?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so for purposes of completing the budget, and we are in the general hearing, anybody have a motion to add that to the budget or not?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Okay. Is there a second?
With the limitation. It's based on the limitation that's dedicated to you, and as long as it's funded by you, then if it's not, it'll be brought back to the court.
Yes, sir.
We would need a memorandum of understanding with CSNCV.
Yes. I'll whip that out. Second that, subject to the MOU. Okay. We have a motion and a second, and one more caveat. State's off of our budget cycle by one month.
Yes, sir, that's correct. We've already started the state budget cycle September one.
So for purposes of this officer getting paid, must be clear on the record, it's through the budget cycle that we get reimbursed. So that's one month short. So it would have to come up prior to us adopting our budget next year. Okay?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Is that agreeable with the motion and the second?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Okay. Let's take about a five-minute break. Our guests have arrived, and we'll let them know where we are and what we're doing. And so stand in recess for about five, eight minutes. Thank you. We're back in open session. And let's continue with thirty-four conduct public hearing on Midland County budget fiscal year 2016, 2017. And Madam Auditor, Alan gave us a little heads up, and we approve that. But you're going to go through what additions there were since the court saw the filed budget.
Yes, sir.
Please.
Now, he did provide to you by email the spreadsheet and gave you a copy of those changes that we are expecting, that have changed since the original budget was, county judge proposed budget. What I do have is I want to go ahead and go over personnel expenditures first. I think we had, I had indicated previously that there were some individuals that had only 25 pay periods rather than the 26 pay periods. The difference in that was an additional $1,124,361. There were also, the juvenile probation department and juvenile detention department did not get budgeted for in the initial proposed budget, only because of the different percentages that needed to be applied to each individual person. We have gone back and applied those percentages. We have gone back and made sure that any additional step increases that the court did not approve were, are not included in there. And we have also gone back to make sure that the overtime line is going to be covered by the state funds.
And Veronica, excuse me for interrupting you, but the two new people it shows in the juvenile area, those are state-funded, is that correct?
It's one additional person, Judge, and yes, it is a state-funded position. I made sure that it wasn't included in this submitted budget to you.
These are the ones that were in the personnel item today?
These are the, these take into consideration those, taking that out, making sure that the state pays for that. So with that being said, these changes of $1,003,496 in juvenile probation and juvenile detention, $1,642,196, does take that into consideration. And that's why we didn't have it in the proposed, and I apologize for not having in that proposed. But like I said, I have to go, once they submit the amounts to the state, I have to go person by person to determine how much is paid for by the state and how much is going to be paid for by the county.
So it's no new additional raises that the court did not approve?
Other than just like the anniversary steps.
And there are no new people for the court's expenses?
Correct. Correct. So in other departments, there are some items here that the court had already voted on and approved. There are some that the court did not. So I want to go through every single line to make sure that the court is aware of any and all changes that are going to be made. The spreadsheet indicates for facilities, building maintenance, we're increasing it $64,000. Diamond flooring at the pavilion is the explanation on that. For facilities, building maintenance, for detention, $19,000 increase for the HVAC Johnson control contract. And I believe that's for maintenance on those HVAC controls. For cemetery, telephone line was decreased by 2,025, only having to do with the fact that all of that telephone is paid for by the IT department. Horseshoe Professional Services, $48,493. I believe the judge received a request for an increase in the salaries by duly management.
That was the one person that was in there? Yes.
Okay. Non-departmental retirees' health, we saw that, you know, the retiree health is now at $1.2 million that the county is having to pay for those and move that over to our healthcare fund. That's just money being transferred over to our healthcare fund. And we are needing an additional $400,000. Non-departmental legal fees, an additional $150,000 for outside legal counsel. Non-departmental contingency salary, we went ahead and did $60,000 there, just having to do with, in case we have, for the compliance, the new compliance, where the all-exempt employees must at least make the 40,000, 46,470, or 47,476, I believe that number is. We do have a change in the IT department, equipment and furnishings, $2,000 increase. Juvenile detention printer radios, that we've increased it on that. IT capital outlay greater than 5,000 increased by $60,000 for the SO, jail door camera, computer touchscreen. In the Title IVD, we decreased telephone by 600. And in county clerks, we decreased the software by 600, that having to do with those two expenses already being in the IT budget. In the auditor's office, professional services increased by $8,000 due to New World Systems training that we are needing. Purchasing, increasing of a vehicle for the one that you had voted on to replace the vehicle for facilities. Community work program contract services increased by 1,040. That was the initial request, plus an additional 140 that the sheriff requested when he did come. And you voted on that one. SO records, records and binders, $2,000. Approval amount for the court death verification. Constable precinct for the vehicle fuel that was missed, $4,500. Emergency management, there was four items for emergency management that the court has already voted on. That was office supplies, 640. Memberships induced, 315. Equipment rental, 300. And building maintenance, 2,025. And that building maintenance, I believe, is for those inspections. Pre-trial telephone increased by 600, having to do with the jetpacks that were included on there but need to be. Juvenile probation equipment and furnishings got decreased by 1,000 because of the new probation office furniture that had initially been included in the request. Juvenile detention, equipment and furnishings reduced by 7,163, and 2,000 of that was moved to IT. Community service, Humane Coalition, $45,000 was increased due to the spay and neuter vouchers that was needed in there. And the Trapper, Trapper Services, they're requesting $6,000 more money. And as it's indicated, state mandated increase on that.
The pre-trial, the pre-trial $600, was that a decrease or an increase?
That is an increase. Because they had, they had it at zero, but really they already have a jetpack in their line that they're having to pay for, and she forgot to include it in her request.
Okay.
We did have some, in the same manner that we had some changes in general fund for the 25 period instead of 26, there was, that was $10,966.70 in all lines except that, not including road and bridge. For road and bridge, we had an increase of $125,768. There was two positions that were not initially budgeted for. I think they were, they were having some issues with the second page in New World. If they don't go to the second page and bring it into the budget, they forgot to go to that second page and bring it into a budget. So that's why there's an increase of $125,000. There was two positions initially left off of there when we did file the proposed. And we made sure on all the positions, we went one by one to make sure there was nobody being missed. So the other changes, and just in your special revenue funds, donation library books, I think this one had already been voted on, $13,500 that you increased that donation fund. And then the horseshoe promotion fund for the events, I think that the fund balance was going to be, leave us there an additional $24,000. So we're just asking to go ahead and get that budgeted for so we can use it.
And Veronica, Veronica, and I've been talking, this is a court decision. We never discussed it fully, so we need to ask this. The $124 in the promotion account is the balance after the initial opening event. We had 150, and then we expensed 26. The question to ask is, in previous building openings, we have funded opening events, and they've been funded as a single action. And then the rest of it continues in the budget. So was it the, what I'm getting at, was it the intent to leave the balance, $124, out of the 150, paying the initial act? Or was it the intent to pay the act as an opening event separately? It's a court decision. We started with 150, and this would be the remaining balance, 124, if we included it. If we say no, we didn't mean to do that, then it would be back to 150, and we'd have to add the 26 to this year. Yeah. And this is our, the one that we approve, all the, the?
For the promotion?
The sheriff's events and all of that? No, no, this is for the entertainment events that we agreed to try for a year.
The money.
Oh, okay. So whatever y'all want to do, we just need to give her some direction.
Do you think that 124 would be enough to go through this next year?
It appears it would be, based on the response we're getting from other promoters, where we don't bear the cost.
I agree with what Jimmy's line of thought is.
I, you know, it's just hard to think on that now, but I, I really think we can leave that alone for this next year. And at the 124 and?
Okay.
Okay, are we in agreement with that?
Sounds fine with me.
Is that okay?
Yeah, sounds good.
Okay, leave it 124.
Okay.
Okay. And then the additions that are not on this page, it's just one that Alan spoke to.
Yes, for the courthouse security officer.
Judge, you know, when you asked me about that juvenile detention that?
Yeah, it just?
Is that the, Mike, is that the, Mike and IT?
Mike and IT.
The juvenile detention printer radio equipment, that $63,000, is, is that the locks and everything we were working on, on the jail doors and stuff? Do you know?
That's because they initially made a request for that, $7,163. When we asked them to detail out what that was, because all it said is just equipment and furnishings, they told us that that's what they were going to use it for. So the judge approved, rather than the $7,163, the judge approved the $2,000 to be used for the printer and radio equipment.
They still had it labeled radio, but when we questioned them, it appeared it was just a placeholder number. And we don't see where the radios are involved.
Okay, I see. We were talking about the IT's budget was increased to pay just that portion of the juvenile detention. Okay, I thought it was a 60-something thousand dollar.
We decreased it $7,163, that was in the juvenile detention budget. And then we increased the IT budget for $2,000 for those things that may come up.
Commissioner, we just couldn't get a good answer at the time, so we thought maybe somebody else knew. Okay?
The third page of what I had sent you, let me just, is just transfers going from a different department into the IT's budget or to the facilities budget, just FYI. And that's not an increase or a decrease of the budget. That's why I didn't include it in the other two pages.
Yeah. So that's kind of what is going on. Since we proposed the tax rate, we're not going to vote on it today because of what's previously mentioned. So the tax rate for discussion purposes remains the same, and that is the effective rate. This is being absorbed through reserves and other changes within the budget. And if we do get a change on Constable Hall's salary, we'll absorb that in the budget. So we're not proposing to increase the tax rate. We'll leave it at the effective rate. Is there anything else that Veronica needs to know about the budget that we've missed? We believe, we checked everything. And Teresa's grinning, so did we leave something out in your department?
No, sir, we were talking. I'm sorry. Do we need to separate y'all? Maybe.
So after confirming with the county attorney and looking at statutes, let's make one correction in our schedule. Because of the tax requirement being heard after publication and being adopted, it will call for us to have a court meeting September 23rd, that's next Friday, at 9:00 a.m. for two items. And that will be the adoption of the tax rate and the adoption of the budget. If there is a correction by the grievance committee, it will be handled that morning.
Judge, can that be on Thursday rather than Friday?
Uh, the grievance committee doesn't meet till 5:00.
On Thursday?
5:30 on Thursday, yes, sir.
Could it be at 10:30 rather than 9:00?
Yes, sir. 10:30. And then we have a regular scheduled meeting the following Monday. So Russell, it is, we could move everything to that Friday, not have the meeting Monday. Is that permissible?
Everything to Friday?
Well, we're trying to see.
Well, you could, Judge, the only, the only problem might be, just since so many people expected to be on Monday, some people might not notice that it was changed.
You're advising us not to do it?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you.
Can this go Monday?
No, because we ran into, go ahead.
Actually, actually, Judge, I had told you that, that Friday was our deadline.
Yes.
Been looking back over the statute, and it's actually, I thought that it was the earlier of the 60 days after we received the certified appraisal rule or the end of the month, it's actually the latter. So actually, you could, you could do all of these items on that Monday, except, I mean, Commissioner Prude wouldn't be here, but you could still do it then.
So you're advising us, we can do everything on Monday, no need to have the Friday meeting?
That's correct, unless, unless you want an entire quarter.
Likewise advising us, we do not need all five of us here to vote on the tax rate, is that correct?
That is correct.
Or adopt the budget?
That is correct.
All right.
And since I am available today, I don't, I mean, there's no reason we can't, we cannot set the tax rate today?
You can't, you have to adopt the budget before setting the tax rate. You can, you can have as much discussion as you want, and you can state your opinions as to, you know, what you think should be done, and indicate how you would vote if you were going to be here, but we can't actually take a vote until the budget has been adopted.
But I can state that now, since I won't be here then?
Absolutely. It's, it's not an actual vote, but absolutely, you can state what you're.
You can state whatever you'd like, Commissioner.
I'm, I'm, was looking forward to doing it all today, except for the, I won't say. So I was looking forward to getting it all done today, and I am in favor of it, the way it's been stated, keep the tax rate at the effective rate, and that's what I've been working for, for years, so.
Okay.
Would have done it today if it was available. But since there's been a grievance filed and messed up the budget, well, I can't do that, so.
You want me to reread your statement on that Monday?
No, I'm done.
For, for the record also, to use the auditor's favorite words, roll forward, encumber, roll forward. Jones Brothers, because of weather, is informed as they won't be able to complete the paving at the last of this budget year, it'll actually go into next month. So if you would roll forward or encumber.
Re-budget.
Or re-budget, whatever this year's word is. 2 million, I'll give this to you, 2,037,649.76, that's what's remaining. And the second piece is 27,465 for the inspections and engineering.
The surface will not be performed until.
Yeah, they can't perform until they get drier weather to put that stuff down, and I think we probably want to finish County Road 60 and a couple of others that were in the program.
Is that a road and bridge infrastructure, correct?
Yeah. And you're welcome to have these, if you want them. Okay? So with that, I think we've completed what we're going to talk about in terms of the budget. Yes?
Just one small thing, the, to comply with the statute, there actually needs to be a vote by the court to reschedule the hearing on both the budget and the tax rate for that date.
Since they're going to both happen on the same day, let's call 35, adopt Midland County budget for fiscal year 2016, 2017, 36, adopt Midland County tax rate. I am suggesting that the motion not be adopt, that we postpone to the next regularly scheduled court meeting, which is two weeks from today, for both of those actions. That, that is a motion.
I would make the motion.
All right, you have the motion, is there a second?
I'll second him.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, motion passes. Thank you. And before we leave today, not to bore everybody, we need to draw the rest of these grievance members in an order prior to the court adjourning. So we'll save that to the very last item.
I have a question on that.
Yes, sir.
So what if nobody shows up for the grievance, is that just.
In speaking with Jim Allison about this on Friday, because it's, it is unusual, and it's no malice, it's just a miss of the email, he said, "We must draw the remaining eligible participants in an order in a court session, and if we exhaust that list and nobody will show, then we have fulfilled our obligation." It would be the same consequence had we not missed it, and that's what the statute.
May I make a, is there any way to adjust the way we file grievances, Russell, such that it can't be just some kind of a email, because those things go to junk files and go to clutter files, and you never know about them, can it, can this be done differently?
I'll, I'll look at it, and I don't believe that the statute gives any leeway on how we limit that, but I'll definitely look at it.
So since we're not giving any raises this year to any elected officials, and one person decides that they think differently than that, we have to change the way we're doing business, right?
Well, it, it's, it's got many components, and I think our office is part of one of the components. We just missed it. We get hundreds of emails a day, and we just missed it. Wish to have a great story, but I don't, we just missed it.
This will be the first one I've ever missed, by the way.
Okay. Okay. All right, with that.
I'm not pleased, if you can tell.
I understand. All right, Steve and Stacy are here, let's go to 23, discuss take action Midland County vision plan renewal. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Morning.
My name is Stacy Minton with Boone Chapman.
No kidding.
Oh, nice to see y'all. It's been a while. So are we going over all of the, the vision? Did y'all take?
Just do the vision first.
Okay.
So we can keep our recorded votes.
Okay, so on the vision, it's real simple, they're, they delivered the renewal for January 1, for January 1 effective date, with a rate pass, there's no increase. We've got about 242, 243 people enrolled in the vision benefit for the first year, that was excellent enrollment. And so far, I've heard positive things about it. I was, I don't know if you've heard anything from Mitzi, but I did talk to her about it previously, we've heard a lot of positive feedback. So the renewal is estimated at $49,454,000 annually. That is not funded by the county, it's funded by the employees.
Okay. So is there a discussion or a motion to continue it at that profile, where the employee has an option to take it and they pay the whole cost?
Correct. Completely voluntary.
I'll make that motion, that we approve the Midland County vision plan renewal on the voluntary vision plan rates at 49,454.
Okay.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, motion passes. 24, discuss take action Midland County stop loss contract. Yes, ma'am?
All right, so in your packets, you should have the summary, just kind of overview, some observations I like to point out to you every year on, on a regular basis, every single year, the county has about three stop loss hits a year. So the county's current specific deductible is $175,000 annually, and that runs from October 1 through September 30th of every year. Of course, meaning that the county is responsible for funding the first $175,000 for any covered person on the plan, and if claims exceed that dollar amount, we file for reimbursement with the stop loss carrier. You've had about three hits a year, you've got three hits this year as well. There were no lasers in the current year, so just as a reminder, a laser is an individual who, when the case goes through underwriting with the carrier, they identify any one particular person and say, well, this particular person, we expect their claims to be a million dollars. And so they're going to put a laser on that individual and say, they don't have $175,000 spec, they have a half a million dollar spec, or maybe a $300,000 specific deductible. We have no, we did have one initially, but we got it removed during the disclosure process last year. In the, the 1415 year, I just want to remind you, because this is not, this is the stop loss contract as well as the organ transplant renewal. We have a fully insured carve-out transplant program in place in connection with this, where the health plan, the self-funded health plan itself doesn't cover organ transplants, because we've provided a carve-out benefit that covers those, gives a lot higher benefit to the members, and saves the county money as well in the long run. So we had two transplants a couple of years ago, one was a bone marrow and one was a lung transplant. The bone marrow is about to undergo or is undergoing a second transplant as well in the current year. So for the 2016, 2017 contract year, we, we did go to the market, we use a system online, just as a reminder, we use an online procurement system called IBX. We asked of the carriers to quote, give us a quote for 175,000 specific deductible, a 200 and a $225,000 specific. And because, of course, we've got really great competitive quotes at the $175,000 level, those are the only ones I've presented to you here, although Mitzi will have the full file of all the quotes that we got, just for y'all's complete records. The transplant program, it is our recommendation, the transplant program, the rates, the details are on the second page of that, which I'll go to in just a second, but on the summary, the fully insured carve-out program is estimated to increase, the rates are increasing about $9,000 annually, for a total of, on the backside, 90, it's going from $81,000 a year to $90,740 would be the annual premium, still a very, very great deal. Every time we look at this, we also ask the stop loss carriers to give us, to let us know, if we were to include transplants back in the health plan, what would it do to our premiums? And our premiums, what we, what we would pay in additional premiums on the stop loss benefit would far exceed what you're paying in premiums to the transplant program. So it's our recommendation that you renew with the current transplant program with a $9,053 increase annually. The next one under the recommendation tab is for stop loss. We are recommending that you renew with Aetna. We moved to Aetna both for the specific and the aggregate coverage this, this past year. The fixed cost increase is just under $24,000 annually with no lasers. Again, they initially had a laser of about $350,000 on an individual, and we got that removed as of Friday, that laser was removed, so that was exciting to get that taken care of. The quote is firm, meaning they're not going to come back and rerate us or apply different, additional lasers, as long as we're able to make, get the decision taken care of today. Renewing with Aetna means the utilization review company will remain prime, prime DX. If we were to change from Aetna to another company for reinsurance, we would have to change the company that does our medical management, our pre-certification process. So we're not changing that because we are recommending to renew with Aetna. The overall increase for both stop loss PPO access fees, we were able to get them to give us a wash, their fee right now, the fee right now for accessing the Aetna network is $12 per employee per month, and they were proposing a $13.23, $13.25, $13.25 rate for October 1 going forward, and we got them to hold at the $12 for another year, so that was, that was good. So the overall total increase, all of those benefits combined, or all those programs combined, is $23,900 annually. On the bat, on the second page of that is where you'll see this, where we've spread the options for the $175,000 specific deductibles. You'll see section one gives you this, all the stop loss numbers, the specific premiums, the aggregate premiums, your attachment factor, so if we were to have an ag hit, what's that top dollar number the plan would have to fund? Your administrative fees under number two, and it only itemizes the administrative fees that would change or be affected if we, depending on what option you selected here. And then section three is your transplant program. So this gives you all the details of what we just summarized on the prior page. The current column is what your current fiscal year, the rates are for your current fiscal year. Option one in blue is obviously what we're recommending that you renew with, with Aetna. And it does point out at the very bottom that that particular option does not have a laser, but you'll kind of look across there to the right, even though option four has lower fixed cost, a lower increase, they have a $275,000 specific laser on an individual, so that puts that particular quote over the top. Are there any questions about the renewal?
So the plan's holding steady.
Doing good. Large claim activity is really looking good.
Any comments you want to share, like refunds or?
No. I didn't see that on here, I'm sorry, I missed that.
You need a vote from the court.
I do.
As to if we want to hold with what we've got, if we, you need one vote or two votes, you want us to stay with Aetna on stop loss?
And renew the organ transplant program? Yes, sir.
All right, so let's talk about stop laws first. Is there a motion, or anybody want to talk about getting away from Aetna and changing the organ transplant? Okay. Hearing none, is there a motion to stay with Aetna?
Make that motion.
And keep the organ transplant as it's currently designed?
I'd make that motion.
Okay.
Second?
You have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, motion passes. Now, you need one more vote?
That is it on this, those two. You did the transplant and the stop loss, that's all I need for that.
Yes.
The rest goes with it.
Now we're going to the plan.
Yes, sir. Ready?
Does that motion include which option we took, one, two, or three?
He said renew with Aetna, and the only one is option one was Aetna.
All right.
The others are other carriers.
Just wanted to make sure that was clear.
But I asked you if you needed another vote, and you said yes, what would the other vote be on the plan?
Oh, I thought I said no.
Because I think we covered you.
Yeah, no, you, you voted on every, all of that, I, I thought you were saying we were going to the other report.
No, I was asking the plan as a whole, we're not going to make any changes in.
Correct.
Is a question for the court, we want to leave the plan intact, just like it is, or we want to change something in the plan? But suggest we leave the plan alone, it's worked pretty good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so let's go on the record, though, if we're going to keep the plan the same. Is there a motion to keep the plan the same?
I'd make the motion, we keep the plan the same.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, motion passes. And for the, the record, the court has agreed to fund the employees' healthcare again this year, so.
We're going to escape the liability on it.
Well, we're, we're going to get some penalties from, as we do every year, from Obamacare, but.
Is that reflected in the plan?
In the, in this financial report? No, sir.
Because they don't come till December?
Yeah, you won't.
It's like 60.
The, the rate, the, the fees, the transitional reinsurance fees? So we have transitional reinsurance fees for this last, this is our last year to pay the transitional reinsurance fee, and it went from, it was $44 per covered life last year, it's dropped to $27 for this year, and then we'll be done with that fee, so that will be our last year to pay that one.
Still have the belly button fee.
And we still have, correct, that one is based on belly button, but we also have the pecory fee, it's a much smaller fee, it's probably going to be close to 2.25, $2.25 per belly button that we pay every July, so we have, we'll, we'll continue to have that one, that fee's a five-year fee, so we'll pay that one until 2019.
If the federal plan is ruled insolvent, and there is discussion in the public domain about that, and it appears it is, then do those fees go away, or are we obligated by statute to pay them to a plan that doesn't possibly exist?
Well, the only fee that goes to that plan, to the exchange, is to help the small groups that are getting into these, or had gotten into the exchanges, is the transitional reinsurance fee. The transitional reinsurance fee is to fund a reinsurance fund for these smaller exchanges that are getting into the market and happen to accept and write a bunch of liability they would not normally ever accept, but they have to under the new regulations. And so that's what this fund is for, so that they can file against this health plan, but they, by statute, they're only given three years to become solvent and. the rule and, and extend that fee. They could always do that, but there's not been any talk about that happening yet.
Okay, but you've had two of your major, large companies leave.
Yes, sir.
Exchange, a third one that's going to announce in October, which seems it would collapse the system.
So, they very well could either vote to extend the transitional reinsurance fee that, so that everybody has to fund and help make them become solvent, solvent, or who knows what the outcome's going to be. I'll certainly learn more about that in October at a conference with the reg writers.
Okay, does anybody have any additional questions of Stacy and Steve? Steve, you want to say anything? Thank you.
Did you want me to go over the report or not?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, let's go with the financial report. That's just a compliment for everybody being here. Go ahead.
Good news. So, in your packet, you also have a, just a mini-update of the financial performance of the self-funded health plan. It's through August 31, and there's several pages in here that have just historical information. There's really only maybe three pages we'll, we'll focus on. So, if you turn Pages 2 and 3 of the report, this is just a sum, overall summary of the, or an illustration of what the funding looks like coming into the health plan every single month. This is just looking at August. And you'll see what we do is we break down the participation in your medical plan on the first page, which is Page 2, and then Dental on Page 3 with totals at the bottom of Page 3. But you'll see we break it up between the active employees, your retirees under age 65, your retirees over age 65, your COBRA individuals. But if you look up under the active employees towards the top there, you'll see that there's several categories. So, you may remember we started charging differently a couple of years ago, based on if you got your health risk assessment done at CareHere, if you didn't, if you chose not to get your health risk assessment done in that particular year, if you were deemed to be a tobacco user or a non-tobacco user as a result of that test, the health risk assessment test. So, and the biometric screening. So, you can see that we've got for the individual, the number of employees that, who chose not to get the health risk assessment done, you've, we've got 24 individuals that did not get it in the prior year, which then counts for this current year. Tobacco users, we've got 66 individuals who have been deemed, employees, not, not total individuals, but employees, who have been deemed tobacco user based on the blood results that were produced through their health risk assessment. And that's 66 who were identified as being a tobacco user and did not complete a tobacco cessation course. Because remember, if they are a tobacco user, they can complete, as long as they compete, complete one of our tobacco cessation courses in the previous year, then they can avoid the higher premium that a tobacco, tobacco user pays under your health plan. And that's in conforming with the wellness regulations under the Affordable Care Act.
Stacy, y'all, we're going to look into a different test, maybe a little more expensive, because we do have some that openly admit they game the system. Did you come up with anything?
We do have some information. Betsy's going to send that information over to you and Mitzi, so you guys can kind of look at that and see what the costs are. The process is different for collecting it, testing, the timing of it all, there's some specifics around that, so we'll shoot that over to you. I don't have that with me today.
All right. Will we have it by the end of the next court meeting? Because that'd be the last meeting of the year.
Should be. Yes, sir.
This is something we had asked her to do. You may recall, we have some people that openly get off of it to get the lower premium, and start smoking again, and then take a course and drop out, and the whole emphasis is to get the lower rate, so.
The, so we're spending $825 a year per employee?
Per month. Per month, per employee per month is what your, the county's funding.
That's per employee per month.
Yes, sir.
$825.
Yes, sir.
Per month, okay.
And again, we looked at cost of living on retirees. If we gave a cost of living, then it affects the retirement account too, and it outstrips what the health care cost is.
So, you can see at the bottom of Page 2, it shows you the total, this funding split between the county and the employees is 87%, 87.4% compared to 12.6% of being funded by the employees. If you look at, then below that, we have the Dental Plan, where we've got, we show you got 533 active employees on the Dental, 151 retirees, and no COBRA participants at this time. So, the, using these summary numbers, the total funding annually is estimated to be about $7.8 million to both the Medical Dental Plan. The county's funding 6.8 million of that, with employees funding just over $1 million. So, if you will turn with me to Page 6, the pages preceding that are just showing you year after year, historical claims versus the funding of the plan. This particular report is a reminder, it only compares the claims to the contributions or the funding of the plan, so it doesn't take into account fixed costs, which we have on a separate sheet, we'll go to in just a second. And it doesn't, and this also shows gross paid dollars, so any stop-loss reimbursement that we got back aren't reflected here, it will be reflected on the next page that we'll go over, the next report. So, Page 6, you can see, we've got 11 months in at the bottom of, or let's go to the top of Page 6, the 14-15 plan year. We had five, just under $5.6 million in claims, if you look to the far right, compared to $6.001, almost $6.002 in contributions. We break these dollars down into how much the dollars are being spent in prescriptions, how many dollars are being funded by retirees, how many claims are being incurred by retirees, and how many claims are being incurred by your active members as well. If you look at the 15-16 year, we've got 11 months, we've got $5,580,000 in total claims, that's prescriptions, retirees, and active members, in comparison to $6.006 in total funding. So, overall, that's really only about a 2.2, about a 2.5% increase over the prior year, your average cost per person. So, that's a, and last year, our trend was even down. Last year, from the prior year, that number that you see, $8,967 per employee per year cost, that's down 3, close to 4% from the prior year. So, we've had a couple of really great year, great years from a claim experience perspective. In the 15-16 year, right now, for the first 31 months, you're at $8,442. By the, by year-end, your average cost per employee will be $9,196. And like I said, that's only 2%, 2.5% increase over the prior year, so that's really good. Now, your prescriptions are up significantly from the prior year, almost 19%. And even though that's a high number, I've got groups where their prescriptions are up anywhere between 25 and 37% increase. And the drive of the prescription increase is focused mainly on specialty medications, these high-dollar medications. Your hepatitis C medications for an 8- to 12-week course can range from $90,000 to $120,000 for an 8- to 12-week course for that hepatitis C medication. Your rheumatoid arthritis med, your Embroths, your Humeras, a lot of those types of medications, obviously, they're very costly, and that category alone is what's driving all the health plan costs, the significant increases we're seeing in other groups. So, Page 7 and 8, again, gives you history of the Dental Plan. Page 9 gives you our 14-15 year, where you'll see we, we collected $326,000 in total funding for the Dental Plan with claims of just over $305,000. It's a 93% loss ratio. And then, if you drop down below that, for the 15-16 year, 11 months in, we're at $265,000 in claims compared to $324,000 in total funding for the health, for the Dental Plan. Page 10 gives you just basically our, you know, kind of like a little mini P and L statement. This gives you, this takes all of the numbers we've already talked about, takes the total funding of the plan. If you go to the far right-hand column, I'm going to look at the 15-16 year, that's 11 months in. We've funded $6,930,000 between the county and the employees, funding the health plan, the medical and dental plan. Then the next section is your total plan cost, so this takes into account total claims paid. You see, we've got $3,796,000 in medical claims paid, but we've gotten $152,000 in stop-loss reimbursement from the carrier, from Aetna, to offset that number. We've got prescriptions of $1,784,000. Your net medical claims at $5,400,000, you factor in your Dental as well, you're at $5,600,000, almost $5,700,000. And then below that, you can see the expenses of the health plan, the administrative costs, the PPO access fees, claims administration, your, your stop-loss premiums, both specific and aggregate, as well as your transplant program and the premiums that you pay for that. So, total fixed cost to the health plan is $897,000. The two, the claims plus the fixed cost brings our total health plan cost to $6,591,000. And if you compare that to the funding of the health plan, we're, we're sitting already at a positive of almost $340,000 for 11 months in, and that's great. And you can see the prior year, we were at a break-even as well. So, the projection page, Page 11 just shows what's going to happen, and then the, we've got one more month in this fiscal year, and so we're, we're showing we're going to build just a little bit more on that positive balance of 340. We're expecting it to become, to come in just under $390,000 by, by fiscal year-end. And then if you turn to the last page, this is just us taking all of the prior three years' worth of data, looking at the, the current year for large claim activity, adding trend, inflation, increased fixed costs that we're aware of, and you can see at the end of the page, we're basically at a break-even with a potential deficit of about $28,000 for FY17. So, that is good news.
Very good news. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Questions of Chapman? Now, you've got something to say.
Good afternoon, good morning. I do want to point something out to the court that I've noticed a trend with your plan, and you probably have noticed it as well, that over the years, when I come out and give the presentation, it's not nearly as positive as the report is that when Stacy gives it. So, I'll be looking into this back at the office and find out why that actually is the case. But I would like to take the time, Court, if I could. We've worked with you and the employees of Midland County for a long time, and I would like to take, and this is probably the last time before the end of the year that we will be addressing the full court. So, I would like to take this time to congratulate Commissioner Smith on his tenure in service to the county, and the pleasure that we've had in working with him on all aspects of the health care program for the employees. So, Commissioner, we thank you for your service, and thank you for working with you.
Absolutely. Thank you. So, one more item before we go to executive session, and it has some bearing, but that is Item 38, Discuss Take Action on Spillman Update and Modules. Daniel has given each of you, it's in your packet, a estimate of the most current spillman with the clip-on modules that gets us a look-alike to what the sheriff has asked for, and the funds are available through the bond on the jail. And the purpose of this is to authorize Mike and his colleagues to purchase this when it's necessary. It may not get purchased, but he needs the authority to do it should we go forward. So, Item 38, Discuss Take Action on Spillman Update and Modules.
Judge, before we leave 25, did we need to take any kind of an action on acknowledgement or anything like that, based on the way it was agendaed?
If you would like to, yes, sir. Let's, let's go back to 25 and Discuss Take Action. Midland County Self-Funded Health Plan Financial Statement, and do we?
Just motion to acknowledge is all I'd like to say.
All right, you have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, motion passes. Now, we'll go back to 38, Discuss Take Action on Spillman Update and Modules. Any discussion or motions or?
Thank motion that we authorize IT, Mike and IT to be able to purchase this spillman software as needed.
Okay.
Is that good enough?
Yes, sir. And the funding, and the funding source, you agree would be out of the jail bond where the money is?
Yes, that would be fine.
You have a second, back Commissioner Donnelly. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Nope, so it passes. Item 37, we're going to hold the last item, there's no need to bore everybody to death with drawing names, so I can do that after executive session. But we need to go into executive session now pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, Self-County Attorney Regarding Pending Prospective Litigation and Other Matters. It is 11:12 by my watch, and so we'll excuse everybody except Rory, the DA, Daniel, Mike. We're back from executive session. It's 11:40 by my watch. Is there any votes from executive session? Hearing none, the last item is to 37, Discuss and Take Action Selecting Grievance Committee Members. That's the remainder month that we have to go on record. So, Allison, hope you're not bored easy, because we're just going to start reading and see y'all a little later. And if you want to take the little slips and write them down?
Three of us will be here. I'm going to stay to you.
You want to take the little slips and write them down, that's up to you. Okay? Robert Gillette. Carol Ann Hunt. Katie Audas, A-U-D-A-S. And I'm going to put them in, the last one drawn will be over here. Okay? The next one is, yeah, I can't get it up. Jamie Owen. Colleen Ellis. Linda Kauten. Ashley Rouge. Richard Howard. Bob Templeton. Chris Small. Billy Ashley. Shelley Firestone. Donna Mason. Will Smith. BJ Beal. We got more. Leslie Vassler. Olivia Frio. Rosa, Rosalva Cordoba. Severno Enriquez.
Severo?
Severo Enriquez. Jack Swallow. Justin Rowland. Zelma Crowder. Zeke Hinaosa. Justin Dockery. Missy Rogers. Steve Shore. Art Lanin Gritch. John Echols. Bobby Terraris. Royal, Roy Coleman Jr. Dale Fowler. Terry Johnson. Darrell Greenfield. Kathy Dunn. Karen Ha, Harold. Deborah Vogel. Shirley Butts. Kendrick Pilcher, P-I-L-C-H-E-R. Kendrick Pilcher, P-I-L-C-H-E-R. Stephanie Stennett. Oscar Ken Riley. Laura Sales. David Kavinsnik. Norma Pino. Todd Jones. Thomas Melt. Craig Tensler. Diane Valdez.
How many did you have to pull?
All of them.
Oh, man.
Yeah. Jonathan Groves. Melissa Wallace. Pamela Stampler. Andrea Anderson. William Merritt. Karen Crownover. Abraham Gutierrez. Herman Eben. Ramsey King. Gloria Skaggs. Tim Cleverton. Jan West. Cindy Piles. Alexa Davis. Mike A. Sanchez. Tanya Twanya, it says, Green. Gail Wilson. Lorena A. Spear. Chris Hasiyo, H-S-I-A-O. James Ford. Chuck Allen. And this is the last group. Last group is Debbie Bowlin. Vicky Byers. Rodney Morgan. Janelle Neen Decken. Tommy Hale. Bruce Wallace. And last but not least, Darrell Dutton. That completes the drawing of all available contestants to be on the Grievance Committee. Okay? Court confirms that since it's a prescribed procedure. Okay? So, with that, is there any other business coming forward to the court? I hear none. Is there a motion? We are adjourned.
Bye, Charlie.
11:45.